This week that she was the Chair of that Committee when I was CAO and she was the Chair of that Committee when Dr. Santalisis was CAO, so we shared a common memory. She represented the Board on state and national levels, including the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, the National School Board Association, the Council of Urban Boards of Education, and the Council of Grade City Schools. And in 2011, she was selected as the statewide school board member who made outstanding contributions to school board service by MAB. That same year, she received the Richard R. Green Award, the nation's highest urban education honor. Principals, teachers, board members, all benefited from her ongoing leadership in many areas of education, but most especially in student learning and achievement. We know that continued advocacy on behalf of student learners is the best way to acknowledge her service and to honor her memory. She will be missed greatly by her family, her friends, and city schools. And just on a personal note, I need to say that I have to let you know that I am sitting in this seat because of Ms. Francois, who really called and told me that I should apply to be a part of the school board. And one of my fondest memories was having her at my first swearing-in at City Hall, along with my family. It's also with deep regret that we inform you of the passing of Demetra Newsom, who served city schools for 27 years. Ms. Newsom served as the Department Head One at Baltimore Polytechnic Institute, and her last assignment was as an Assistant Principal at Edmison Westside High School. Ms. Newsom unfortunately departed on January 2nd, 2020, and we know that she will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and the entire city schools community. London Stuckey was a 10th grade student at Achievement Academy. London enrolled at Achievement during this school year and was working to get back on track. He was improving his attendance and was very popular amongst his peers. Deonte Patterson was a 10th grade student enrolled at Achievement Academy. He enrolled with us during last school year. While enduring many difficulties outside of school, Deonte was interested in the program at Achievement with the hopes of earning a high school diploma. And last, I'd like to also inform you of the passing of another former employee, Ms. Ellen Gonzalez, who served city schools for over 30 years. She ended her time in our school system as an Executive Officer for the Baltimore City Northern Area Schools. Would you please join me for a moment of silence in remembering these very important folks who were a part of our community and keeping their families in our thoughts? It is always difficult to read, especially these notices, but especially this evening is when you heard me read two students from one of our schools. And so I also want to ask that you please keep our school staffs, as well as the students in that school, Achievement Academy, please keep them in your thoughts and prayers, that hopefully we won't have to continue making these kinds of announcements, unfortunately, I now would ask for a motion to approve the open session minutes.
Madam Chair, I have a correction to the previous minutes. Commissioner Berkeley should be removed and I should be added.
Okay, you mean the open session meetings on the line? Okay, thank you. I will make that correction, so a motion to approve them as corrected.
So moved.
Commissioner Reed, is there a second? Commissioner Lynn, okay. All those in favor?
If I am correct, there are eight, with two absent.
Now, I need a motion to approve the closed session summaries. Do we need to make the same correction? Do you recall? That was okay, okay, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, is there a second? Commissioner Reed, all those in favor?
Hassan.
Bondima.
Richardson.
Chinya. At seven, and two absent. I don't really have lots of comments for this evening, other than a reminder that Monday is the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holiday, and just a reminder to everyone that that is to be used as a day of service, and so encourage all of us as community members to find ways that we can do some things to serve within our community. And if you could do something that will serve young people, that will be even better. So we're hoping that you do have a good holiday and a fruitful holiday. I'd also like to acknowledge the gift of $7,000 worth of school branded clothing for Johnson Square Elementary School, which was donated by Randall Schmalz. This time, we're going to look at the personnel and quasi judicial matters, and first, I need to pull item 3.07. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation for that appeal, 3.07? Thank you, Commissioner James, seconded by Commissioner Bondima, all those in favor?
James.
Richardson.
Chinya.
Five.
Okay, that's seven, two absent. I'm sorry, I'm abstaining. Six, one abstention and two absent. And now, a motion to approve the remaining personnel and judicial, quasi judicial matters. Commissioner James? I mean, I'm sorry, Hassan, and seconded by Commissioner Bondima, all those in favor?
James.
Richardson.
I can vote this time, Chinya.
Five.
Okay, seven and two absent. Okay, thank you. And I believe I am ready to turn it over to you, Dr. Santalisis.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Chinya. This evening, I would just also like to briefly add on my own personal thanks and really heartfelt regard for Jarrell Francois, who, as Board Chair Chinya noted, was the head of the Teaching and Learning Committee when I was Chief Academic Officer. But I actually considered her a mentor. She was my Baltimore historian. She was the one who really first walked me through some of the really important history of Baltimore City Public Schools and its role in the community. And she was a supporter when I assumed this role as CEO. Jarrell was one of the first people who not only called to congratulate me, but annually would check in and see how I was doing. And even in the last, near the end of her life, what always struck me was, at her very core, she was the consummate educator. She taught Sunday School as long as she could, and when you went to visit her, she had floods of cards from students as young as kindergarten or first grade. And I never went to visit her when there were not people waiting to see her, where there were letters of well wishes and cards filling her room. And she lived, she lived life well, in the sense that there clearly will be those of all generations, all ages, who will remember her felt impact, and I consider myself blessed and privileged to count myself among them, and I thank her for her example of frankly black female leadership in education, what it looks like, what it feels like, and how you never, ever, ever forget that young people are at the core of what we do. So, I just needed to say that for me. Okay. I want to continue by honoring the Poly Junior ROTC cadets who served as our color guard this evening. To promote esprit de corps, teamwork, and self-confidence among Junior ROTC cadets, all units in city schools compete annually for the title of Best Baltimore City Junior ROTC Unit by participating in eight citywide competitions, which I can confidently say, as CEO, I would fail miserably. And they include physical fitness, drill, the National Academic Bowl, and a citywide community service project. The unit earning the most points is declared Best Baltimore City Junior ROTC Unit and is awarded the CEO's Cup. I am very pleased to announce that the winner for the 2019 school year and the third year in a row is the U.S. Air Force Junior ROTC Program at Baltimore Polytechnic Institute under the direction of Colonel Gina Humble and Senior Master Sergeant Randy Letzkin. In addition, both of these instructors received national recognition for their service. Colonel Humble was selected as one of two overall Air Force Junior ROTC outstanding instructors in the nation. And Senior Master Sergeant Letzkin was selected for a regional award. I would now like our cadets and their instructors to come forward to receive their award and Baltimore Polytechnic Institute was ranked 36 in the nation for science and technology be recognized for their excellence. education, number one in the state among all private and public schools. So again, when people talk about Baltimore, they need to note that we produce young people who stand nationally as some of the best that our country, not just our city, has to offer. So congratulations again to our Junior ROTC and to the entire Baltimore Polytechnic community. Art and music are essential elements in student wholeness. As many of you know, the Board, myself, and our community is committed to expanding opportunities for young people to develop both as artists, but also as just artistically expressive citizens. I consider myself in the latter group, not the former. And so, part of what we believe here is that involvement in the arts really is a critical and essential component to school and to learning. And it really is part of providing all young people in the city with a well-rounded quality education. That's why I am very pleased to present this video from our talented student media team about the Arts Immersion Program at Commodore John Rogers, where the arts are alive and well.
We care about the full development of children, and we see that they have potential in so many different areas. And one of those areas is the arts, whether they're doing artwork, the visual arts, whether they're doing music, whether they're in the band or the chorus. Those are the things that really make them excited. It really helps complete our entire school community.
It brings life to the school. Like, in the hallway, it's a lot of designs and everything, and it's color, and it's all made from our art classes.
The vision for the school is that we have a full art immersion program.
I think it helps a lot of kids be more prepared and also be more creative and know themselves without it.
Our music program here at Commodore John Rogers, it starts with children in pre-K all the way up to eighth grade.
Before, I didn't want to play it because I wanted to quit because I couldn't really play. But Mr. Watson told me, he encouraged me, he was like, "It's gonna be okay. Like, after a while, it gets easier." He was right, because now I can play, and like, now I might be in honor band.
Do you get to use instruments like the clarinet, the drum? It's important because they can see us accomplish stuff.
Ready, two, breathe, blow.
We work on movement, keeping the beat, simple songs, folk songs.
I describe my day fun when I have music in it. Not everybody gets to have their own instrument and play, and not everybody has the same chance that you get to get when you come to school.
Take them and bring them down as if you're gonna play.
You pinch, and then you wrap your fingers around, you bring it up to a V, you bring it down, and you hold it over, your palms should be facing the ground.
Okay, all right, don't put your fingers underneath. We don't put fingers underneath instruments.
The beautiful thing, you know, our principal really pushes the arts, and he has the same philosophy. Give kids the opportunity, not just one art form, but as many as we can give them. It's something that our kids thrive in and they excel in, and, you know, at Commodore, it's part of the fabric of our building.
I feel like it would help me in high school, so I can go to a better high school, not just because of my other academics classes.
It's fun. Most of the events we have at Commodore builds around us playing different songs. I do enjoy coming to this class when I am here at school.
It gives your students more opportunities and more things they can do when they get in high school and college.
Out of my 10 years, I have not had any students that did not make it into the art school of their choice.
You erase the inside, and then you're left with your box letters.
We went through all the elements of art, and we're working towards our final project.
I put art because it represents me. A lot of people know me as drawing a lot.
And the fact that I get to express myself when, like, different places I don't like in math class or math class.
So once we learn all these elements, we place them all together, that's how art is created. And you become not an illustrator, but an artist.
And so we need to invest in that, we need to make those opportunities available. We need to help support our students so they can be their best selves.
And I want to thank again our student media team for their work on that video footage, and just to again remind us all, as we approach the budget season, for schools to continue to take into account the needs in the arts expression, needs of their young people. We are pleased that in the budget, we will be presenting to the Board for their review and approval, will be the addition of a full-time arts position to our central arts team. And when I say central arts team, I really mean one person. So we will be committing to that as part of the proposal, as part of the proposed budget that the Board will review later on this winter. It is now my pleasure to welcome Ms. Courtney Battle, former city school staff member and currently Director of Financial Capability for the Cash Campaign of Maryland. Courtney is joined by Mr. John Brothers, President of T. Rowe Price Foundation and a strong partner of city schools. Ms. Battle and Mr. Brothers are here to tell us about the many financial services available through the Cash Campaign and a valuable opportunity to receive up to $500 towards your students' college education through the Save for College State Contribution Program. That's the formal introduction. These are both two individuals that I will say continue to demonstrate, even though Courtney won't let me recruit her back, who continue to demonstrate their long-term commitment, not only to city school students, but to the city of Baltimore. So thank you, John, and thank you, Courtney. It's great to see you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you so much. So, on behalf of T. Rowe Price, we are honored to be partnering with Baltimore City Public Schools in a number of different ways, and the arts education piece, to school community partnerships, and One Book Baltimore, and finally, the initiative that Courtney is gonna walk you through around child savings accounts. And so we're really happy. I am personally happy to see our T. Rowe family member Vernon Reed sitting around the table. It makes me super happy to see him here. He was a Board Member of the Foundation Board that I currently serve in, and so we're happy to see him here. It was just around two years ago that I approached Dr. Santalisis to talk about child savings accounts. We had seen child savings accounts in other places around the country happen, and we saw an opportunity here in Baltimore for child savings accounts to really flourish. And so we locked arms with our colleagues from the Cash Campaign of Maryland and built a broad coalition following that conversation with Dr. Santalisis, and are happy to sit here two years later and report out to you the really good work of that coalition and how it's impacting and setting itself in communities throughout the city to ensure that both young people and families are able to grab the financial resources necessary to be able to send themselves and their young people to higher education and other opportunities. So I'll leave it to Courtney to talk through that really good work, but thank you for having us.
Thanks, John. So I'm really excited to talk about how our families and Baltimore City residents can get access to what is essentially free money. That's not often the case, that somebody is telling you that something that sounds too good to be true is actually real, but this is actually real money that's available to Marylanders each year for future education purposes. It is a program called the Save for College Program. I included the full slide deck in your handouts, but I'm just gonna highlight a couple of slides because I know we have time limited today. So, the Cash Campaign of Maryland, we promote the economic advancement of low and moderate income families across the state. We do that through free tax preparation services. You can call 211 now and schedule a free tax prep appointment. But we also provide financial education in the community and are really proud to be a part of this initiative to raise awareness and help make accessible future and higher education needs for families. So the opportunity is that the state legislator in 2015, I believe, or 16 actually, had passed legislation to create this program called Save for College, and it was really designed to help kickstart college savings for Marylanders across the state. The way it works is you open a Maryland 529 College Investment Plan, and then you complete a very quick and simple application, letting the state know that you would like an additional $500 to be contributed to your account. A 529 college savings plan is one that a lot of our families have never heard of. They often don't have access to investment products and retirement funds, and so that's why we are focusing really on the outreach efforts, because it takes a lot of work to get people comfortable and familiar with this program. But if you have a 401K or a 403B with your employer, you know pretty much exactly how this works, because it's set up very similarly. It's a tax-advantaged savings plan designed to pay for future education needs. You can pay for room and board, your books, tuition, and other things that you might need to get through school. And again, the money in that account is treated like it is an investment program, and so the, hopefully, your money grows along with the money that the state is contributing. Some people ask if this is the Maryland program, does that mean I have to go to school in Maryland? And the answer is no. You can actually use this money at any institution internationally or domestically that accepts federal funds. These are the income guidelines, and the ones that I want to highlight are that for families that earn $50,000 or less as an individual, and again, this is based on your Maryland state taxes, your minimum contribution each year is $25. So every year, you put in $25, you can apply for the state to then match it with $500. That's a one-time contribution in a year, not a monthly contribution. So the bar is really, really low, trying to design to be really attainable for families. So the steps are simple. You open the Maryland College Investment Plan, which you can do right now, tonight, you can go home and open it up. You designate your beneficiary, so that's the person that you're saving for. It can be your child, it could be your godchild, it could be your niece, your nephew, they need to be a Maryland state resident. You submit the application, which it'll prompt you to do if you open the account online, and then you make your minimum contribution by November 1st, and then the state will review your application and then deposit the funds in your account sometime in December. So I did this for my family this year, which meant that for each of my boys, I was able to get $500 into their college savings accounts this December. It was a nice little gift right before Christmas. We even opened an account for my husband, who's thinking about going back to school and getting his masters, and so there's no age restrictions on this, so I opened, we opened an account for him and also applied for the match. So that was $1,500 in one year for my family for future education needs. So it can, again, there's a lot more details that I can go into about this program, but what I really want to highlight is that Cash Campaign is here and available to offer workshops at schools, enrollment events. We are ready and willing to talk to anyone about this program, and actually sit down in front of a computer with them and help them through the application process. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to take them. Go get your money, Baltimore. Get our money. Thank you for having us.
I want to thank you guys again just for your leadership, your organization's leadership in really bringing this to our families in Baltimore City, and I know some of the early work has shown some really promising results, so we're excited to have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a public entity, city schools is subject to many audits, but it's important because the audits demonstrate that we are good stewards of public resources in the service of the students and families we serve. At this time of year, as we enter our legislative session, it becomes even more important that we continue to publicly communicate where we stand with our finances, and so I am pleased to invite Keith Novak. Keith, it's so good that you're still here. Keith Novak-Aris, Aris Coleman, and Bill Early of Clifton Larson Allen, our external auditing firm, to present the results of the 2019 financial statements and single audit. I want you to know, Keith, I meant that with all admiration.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Santalisis, and Commissioners. My name is Keith Novak, and this is the exciting part of the evening. We are excited to present the results of the audit. This will be my last presentation. With me is Aris Coleman. She'll be actually handling the presentation this evening, as well as Bill Early, who will be taking over from me as principal and the engagement as we go along. So with that, I'll turn it over to Aris, and she can carry on the presentation.
Thank you, and Happy New Year to everyone. As Dr. Santalisis mentioned, we are here to present the financial statement results and the single audit for city schools. We have a short presentation, and in that presentation for the financial audit, we'll go over our audit approach, the results of the audit. There are some required communications that we must make in accordance with standards. Bill will go over some upcoming Gatsby pronouncements, which will affect the financial statements for the school system. And then we'll get into the single audit. The single audit is an audit of your federal funds that are expended during the fiscal year. We'll look at the overall audit approach, give you our results of the opinions, and the programs that were audited. So with the financial audit... So, with that, I'll turn it over to Aris, and she can carry on the presentation.
Thank you, and Happy New Year to everyone. As Dr. Santalisis mentioned, we are here to present the financial statement results and the single audit for City Schools. We have a short presentation, and in that presentation for the financial audit, we'll go over our audit approach, the results of the audit. There are some required communications that we must make in accordance with standards. Bill will go over some upcoming GASB announcements, which will affect the financial statements for the school system. And then, we'll get into the single audit. The single audit is an audit of your federal funds that are expended during the fiscal year. We'll look at the overall audit approach, give you our results of the opinions and the programs that were audited. So, with the financial audit, CLA, Clifton Larson Allen, we are the main auditors for the engagement, but we are assisted by auditors from King &amp; King and Phillips and Company. We have an integrated team, and although these two firms have been assisting us for more than, I think, 10 years with the program, when you look at how the team works, they work, we work as one team serving our client. So, it's not three separate teams, it's actually one team that is doing the audit for the school system. Our auditors, as well as the King &amp; King and Phillips and Company, we specialize in City Schools' educations. We do have a school boards in the state of Maryland, state of Virginia. So, the team that comes together knows how the City School Systems work, and we have experience in some of the areas and differences that the school system may face versus other government entities. The financial systems are also reviewed by a IT specialist, and what they do is look at the systems that basically support the financial statements. For the most part, it's the system that basically counts the dollars and cents. We want to make sure that information and the integrity of it is something that we can rely on to do the financial statements. The whole audit approach is emphasis on key internal controls. And what that is, is we, you have financial statements that are in front of you, but the underlying information that is used to compile that financial statements, it must be reliable, it must be accurate, and it must be timely. With that being said, the internal controls, the processes consistently being applied, being updated and reviewed, is an integral part of what we're doing. Before we determine if the number is accurate, we need to know the underlying items behind it to make sure we can rely on those. Throughout the audit, there's frequent communication, whether it's with the finance department. We also have spoken to some of you on the board throughout this process, and we do informal status meetings to make sure we're keeping City Schools in the loop and up-to-date on our audit process. So, for 2019, the auditor's opinion was unmodified. Unmodified is the highest level of assurance that we are allowed to give as an auditor. So, that means that there were no material weaknesses, there were no significant deficiencies, and the financial numbers that are presented in the financial statements are reasonably and materially accurate.
I'm sorry, did you say that was the lowest rating that a school district should?
No.
I'm sorry, could you just, I got a little fuzzy right here.
That is actually the highest rating that we can give on the financial statements. As I mentioned before about your internal controls, in accordance with government auditing standards, we're required to actually issue a report on the internal controls. And in that report, we are asked to present whether or not the internal controls, which is the underlying procedures that are used to build the financial statements, if there were any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Again, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We are not allowed to give a letter that says there are no problems, we just say we didn't find any that meet the criteria in accordance with standards. So, some required communications. Our audit is done in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. You're here to let the word "GAS" ... And what that is, is that the financial statements that are responsibility of management, they are done in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted audit principles, and that they are in accordance with standards. Excuse me for a minute. They are in accordance with standards that we must opine on. When we talk about the financial statements, it's quick. I think your financial statements are probably about 200 pages. That is management. That is the finance team under Mary Ann Cox area. We have three pages. That's our opinion. So, when we speak about the financial statements, we're really talking about the work that's done by the City School System. We're just giving three pages on our assessment of that information. So, there's a lot of information that they have to put together, and with the state of Maryland, is required in a short turnaround timeframe. So, it's really a great effort by them. When you look at the financial statements, there are some items that we call estimates. And when we say estimate is, the numbers are based on assumptions that are underlining, and management determines whether or not these, from these assumptions, they determine a liability or disclosure that's going to be presented in the financial statements. As auditors, we are required to look at those assumptions, determine if they're reasonable, and if they are accurately, if they are able to support the underlying information or the financial statement line item. So, with that, when you look at your net pension liability disclosure, the OPEB liability disclosures, the reasonable life for your fixed assets, your claims that have been incurred but not recorded, also known as IBNR, your compensating absences, and your receivable allowances, we determine those to be estimates. And looking at the underlying assessments, we have determined those, excuse me, the estimates to be reasonable. There was no substantive information reported in the financial statements. We did not, we did not count any difficulties throughout the audit. There were no disagreements with management. We did obtain representation from management, basically stating that all the information that was provided to us for the financial statements and the audit was accurate. Management did not consult with any other auditors. They just consulted with us if they had any questions or wanted any assistance. There were no other significant findings or issues other than what we presented here, the letters with the internal controls and the opinion. We did not issue any separate communications with management noting any other items that were not presented. And that the audited financial statements, we, their information there that we call supplemental information. Supplemental information, we are required to review it and to make sure it is congruent with the financial statements, but our opinion, we do not express an opinion on this information. Next, I want to talk about upcoming GASB announcements, which are new financial statement standards that will affect City Schools' financial statements.
Yeah, let me give you a break, Aris, there. So, yeah, I'll be working with Aris. We'll be working with the Finance Department of Mary Ann Cox for the upcoming GASBs. Two large ones coming up mainly is Statement Number 84, fiduciary activities, which is student group accounts. Those currently are falling under agency funds. Moving forward, they most likely will fall under general or special revenue funds, or could fall as custodial funds based on evaluation and a flow chart that, analysis that would be performed. We're working not just with the City Schools, but with other school districts in the state. We actually have an upcoming roundtable this week to go through the implementation of this GASB in a little more detail with everyone. Following that, GASB has actually picked up Statement Number 87, which is on leases. That will be coming in December 15, 2019, sort of follow the July 1, 2021 year-end for June 30 for you all. What that one does is it picks up any leases that are currently labeled as operating leases. They'll essentially all become capital leases. So, a lot of it is going through the analysis of what's material to the school system. So, copier leases, any building leases, and et cetera. Currently, right now, you don't have those recorded in your financial statements. You just pay as you go on those, but you will be actually picking up any liabilities on your books for those moving forward. So, we'll be working with them to do analysis of all the leases that you all have entered into, to determine exactly how they'll fall into your audited financial statements moving forward. But really, the big one next year will be 84 that we are currently on top of and working with the Finance Department and Mary Ann to go through and start the implementation of that one for next year's financial statements. So, when we sit here next year, we'll be able to tell you the exact impact of how that affected your financial statements. So, and I think, Aris, I'll turn it back over to you for the single audit.
All right. Just a couple of minutes, minutes more. Thank you very much for your patience. The last one is a review of your federal audit, of your federal expenditures. In accordance with the Single Audit Act, which is under the federal government's office of budget and management, we must review programs that are, that fall under your federal City Schools get over, spends over $100 million a year in federal monies, whether, most of it's passing through Maryland State Department Education, MSDE. Some of the monies is direct, and we must do a risk-based approach to look at the programs that are, this money is being spent on, and we put them into categories, Type A and Type B. And as you can see with Type A, that's where most of the monies are being spent, and Type B, Type B is a little less. We look at these two categories, and we have a certain risk assessment that's outlined by the federal government. Based on that assessment, City Schools does qualify as a low-risk auditee, and what that means is only at least 40% of the total federal dollars, 20, excuse me, at least 20% of the total federal dollars are subject to testing. As Keith just nudged me, because I said 40, 40 is for someone who's not low-risk. They, we'd test more. So, therefore, we're testing the minimum threshold that's allowed by the federal government. When we select the major programs that we're going to test for that year, we have requirements, again, that fall under the federal compliance supplement. And also, MSDE, time to time, may actually ask us to look at certain items for certain programs, and we will implement that as well as our process. These are the various categories that are tested for the federal programs. The big one is going to be allowable costs, which is your first one. That's basically how the monies are spent. So, for fiscal year 2019, City Schools had a total of $148 million federal dollars spent during that year. We tested $48 million of that, 148, and that was about 32%, which, as I mentioned before, 20% is the minimum that we can test. The two programs that were tested was your Child Nutrition Cluster and then the Preschool Development Grants, which is your duty centers. With the opinions that are given, we give one over the internal controls or financial reporting. There were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We also issue a report over the major programs and the compliance with them, as well as your schedule of expenditures of federal award, which we call the SEFA. Again, there was unmodified opinion, the highest level of assurance that we are able to give. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Any questions from the board? Okay, again, I just want to thank the Clifton Larson Allen team for your partnership on this. I wish you, sir, a wonderful retirement, and thank you.
11 months, 16 days.
Who's counting? That's right. And I also want to thank Mary Ann Cox, our interim chief financial officer, for her continued leadership in kind of the internal operations that make this kind of audit possible and these audit findings possible. So, kudos to Mary Ann and the entire finance team for the work on this. Thank you. Thank you all. At this time, I am going to invite Chief Grant Skinner for this evening's PEP agenda.
Good evening, Dr. Santalisis and Commissioners. Each of our appointees is here this evening, so if you would stand when I call your name, we can recognize you then. First, Brittany Echols, a health teacher from Prince George's County Public Schools, is appointed Educational Specialist II for Physical Education and Health effective Dana Yates, excuse me, Dana Yates, social worker at Matthew A. Henson Elementary School, is appointed Educational Specialist II for Safety Conferencing effective January 15. Deshaun White, Assistant Principal at Moravia Park, is appointed Managing Assistant Principal at Moravia Park effective January 15. Latrea Bond, Educational Associate at Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary School, is appointed Assistant Principal at Collington Square Elementary Middle School effective January 15. Tatum Daniels, Principal at Moravia Park, is appointed Manager for School Support and Operations effective January 15. And Aquila James, Principal at District of Columbia Public Schools, is appointed Director of Academic Strategy effective January 6.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner, and congratulations to the newest members of the City Schools team, and for those current members of the City Schools team who are assuming new positions. So, congratulations. Finally, I think that we can all agree that what is borne out in the data is true in everyday interactions at schools, and that is that no other position save that of the individual classroom teacher, and no other single leadership position of a team has greater impact on student achievement, family satisfaction than that of the principal. I have said before, I will say again, that the principal really is the linchpin and the leverage point for school improvement and educational improvement across our city and frankly, beyond our city. We ask a lot from our principals in City Schools. We hold them to very high standards and with a rigorous evaluation system that cuts across their numerous areas of responsibility. I am pleased to report that we here in City Schools have had the lowest two years of principal turnover in more than a decade. I am also very pleased that we retained 100% of our highly effective principals this past school year. But if we want to continue to attract and retain highly effective principals, we need to ensure that our principals' salaries are competitive with other districts around Maryland and our region. This is no longer the case. Tonight, we are submitting a new two-year agreement with PISAZA that begins to redress that disparity. Our goal is to increase the number and equity of schools that have a, quote, "stable and effective leader," defined as a principal who has been in the school for more than three years and rated effective or better in each of the last three years. If our principals continue to improve, our schools, all schools, will continue to improve. This new agreement is a significant step toward achieving that goal. We are proud that within this new two-year agreement, the average increase for our principal salaries under this agreement is approximately $7,300, including increases of $10,000 for principals at the lower end of our salary scale. A school's success truly begins and ends with the principal. The transformational and distinguished pathways will continue, and principals on those pathways will continue to earn at or above $150,000 a year. We are very pleased with the fact that two years ago, the floor for principal salaries in City Schools was $90,000, clearly the lowest in our region. It is now $100,000, and with the tentative agreement with PISAZA, it raises the minimum principal salary to $110,000 for the first time in a number of years, making us once again competitive with our surrounding school districts. We are pleased that we, within two years, have begun to really close the gap, to signal not only to potential school leaders in this district, but to our sitting school leaders and sitting aspiring school leaders, that we value the work of principals, and we are proud to compensate you, frankly, far closer to what it is that you deserve. And with that, I conclude my remarks for this evening and turn it back to Commissioner Chinna.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisis. At this time, I'm going to do a review of the consent agenda. This is not a time where we're going to vote. I'm just going to ... I'm, uh, uh, just going to list those, um, if they're items that a member would like to have pulled, we will do so at this time, uh, then following the public comment, uh, I'll come back to see if there are any additional items. We are going to, uh, hold on, let me make sure I get these correct. Eight point zero one is, um, the PISAZA contract. We are going to pull eight point zero two, eight point zero three, and eight point zero four, uh, for student voting, correct? And that is the policy, uh, JLF, the waiver request, um, for the Baltimore School for the Arts and waiver request for ACE. Okay? Eight point zero five is the Cub contract. We, we are pulling the remainder of that section because, uh, those are the, uh, recommendations around the portfolio, um, review. So now I'm moving into the, um, procurements. Thirteen point zero one, Marco Technologies. Fifteen point zero five, Garrett metal detectors. I'm sorry, zero one. Fifteen point zero two, Towser Mechanical. Fifteen point zero three is also Towser Mechanical. Fifteen point zero four, Building Concepts LLC and Bronner Builders. I believe that's it, correct? Okay. So, um, other than the ones that I mentioned earlier, nothing else has been pulled at this time. So now we will move into, uh, public comment. We have three of the special, um, specially recognized groups that have signed, two, I'm sorry, that have signed up for this evening. First is the Baltimore Teachers Union. Um, Zach Taylor is the representative.
Good evening. Uh, tonight, the BTU wants to briefly speak about two issues. Uh, first regarding, uh, changes to this year's student learning objectives, commonly known as SLOs. Uh, SLOs are the primary measure of student growth for teachers and principals in annual evaluations throughout the state of Maryland. They were originally conceived by MSDE as a way for teachers to establish their own goals to meet the needs of their students, since teachers are the adults most familiar with their classrooms. However, this year, Baltimore City has greatly reduced the degree of autonomy that teachers have traditionally had when establishing SLOs. And this has resulted in a number of issues about the appropriateness of how SLOs for various grades and content areas are structured. Uh, the problems raised by these new policies are distracting from the important work that teachers are doing with their students each and every day. In the past, teachers had the option to select from a variety of assessments for their SLO as long as it was followed, um, as long as it followed certain guidelines and was approved by their principal. However, this year, the district has mandated a particular assessment for most content areas. Likewise, in the past, teachers or school leaders could set the growth or mastery goal for their students, again, in line with district guidance and approval from a principal. But again, this year, most content areas now have these goals set by the district. This loss of flexibility requires teachers, in extremely varied situations, to now all be in one box, whereas the original primary intent of SLOs, as stated repeatedly by MSDE, has been to allow school leaders and educators the ability to take into account the nuanced realities of their classrooms. In response to these changes, we've sent over seventy questions generated by, um, hundreds of veteran teachers to the district, and for its part, the district has been willing to hear our concerns and give responses, as well as meeting with teachers, um, to offer some support on certain issues. However, a number of issues remain, and a loss of professional autonomy has, and this loss of professional autonomy has greatly reduced morale among career teachers, especially those who have worked in or are very familiar with other Maryland school districts. In some areas, teachers are now being forced to use assessments for their SLOs in ways that violate those assessments' original intents. Kindergarten teachers, for example, are now required to use an assessment called DIBELS for their SLOs, but as the DIBELS handbook notes, it's an inappropriate use of DIBELS to measure a teacher's effectiveness, uh, with this assessment, and it undermines the basis on which it was developed. Moreover, there is no rigorous research supporting the use of these assessments in this way. Likewise, math teachers in the district are now required to use the ANET assessment for its SLO, a test that ANET itself says should not be used to evaluate a teacher's or student's progress. Rather, it should be primarily used to inform instruction. This year, there have been issues with various ANET assessments containing questions that have not yet been covered by the curriculum, thereby penalizing teachers' evaluations in ways that are beyond their control, while also creating an extremely frustrating experience for students, um, who have been asked to solve problems that their curriculum has not yet covered. This issue has been acknowledged by some in the math department here at North Avenue. In general, these problems are indicative of issues across the board regarding SLO resources and assessments that have not yet been fully developed or are being used in ways that violate their original intent. Consequently, students are now required to take tests that have not been fully vetted and sometimes contain questions that aren't aligned with the required curriculum. In past years, teachers' professional autonomy afforded space to address these shortcomings, but teachers no longer have meaningful decision-making options when it comes to SLOs. There are other options that I don't have, there are other issues I don't have time to discuss, but what's common with the majority of these is that they could have been addressed and mitigated through working with teachers. In the future, when working on the pressing problems facing our students and schools related to instruction, we strongly encourage the district to work in collaboration with its teachers, to build relationships of collegiality and trust, and to reduce these types of avoidable mistakes. This declining professional autonomy and respect is another issue that hurts retention among some of our very best teachers, and we hear it on a regular basis, especially with regard to this topic of SLOs. The second topic I'd just like to briefly mention is the potential closure of George W.F. McMecon School. Um, last week, the BTU attended, uh, McMecon Community School Meeting and heard a number of concerns from various family members and staff members. Um, and we heard several commitments made by the district, and we want to ensure that all of these commitments are followed and that the BTU is kept abreast of any transition process if it's needed. Um, in particular, the BTU wants to ensure that all students are placed at the appropriate school based off of their IEP needs, whether it is the Bear or the Claremont School or some other school that makes sense for that family. Likewise, we are concerned about the transportation needs of these students, especially since some of these students will now have to commute a much greater distance than was previously necessary, again, if this closure goes forward. Regarding staffing, the BTU requests regular updates on staff transfers, when and if the time comes, keeping in mind that staff assigned to students as one-on-one paraeducators should maintain those particular assignments or should be given first priority during the employee transfer window. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, our next, uh, group is, um, Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, CCAQ, Sheila Billups.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everybody had a successful Christmas and Happy New Year to you all. I, um, I come with, um, great thankfulness to the district for Dr. Brooks, Dr. Jackson, Ms. Lindsay Anderson, and Angela Everas for taking the time to, um, come to McMecon and talk about the possibility of the school closing. I had an opportunity to walk through with several of the board of commissioners, um, at the school, and I just want to thank you all for being so due diligent in whatever the decision made. We had, um, some recommendations from staff as well as the parents, and those was taken in consideration, um, like the BTU has said. I, and I believe that these recommendations is going to be considerate, and I'm looking forward to work with you on, make sure that the transition for those students, wherever they go, will be done decency and order. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Billups. So I'm going to move to general comments, and, um, the first, uh, person we have who's signed up is, uh, Ms. Feres Lee.
Good evening, President, Madam President and Board and Dr. Santalisis and staff.
Good evening. This is the NACA's Board of Directors' official response to BCPS's recommendation for non-renewal of NACA II. This is, uh, the Northwood Apple Community Academy Freedom and Democracy Public Charter School Board of Directors hereby submits this letter of reprimand and formal notice that the Baltimore City Public Schools system is in breach of contract. Since our NACA II renewal won in two thousand sixteen, Baltimore City Public Schools has unilaterally abdicated and violated the BCPS-NACA II Agreement Contract approximately ninety times in the areas of governance, instructional autonomy, and school climate. BCPS's recommendation for non-renewal and the current status of NACA II is a direct result of Baltimore City Public Schools' consistent, intentional, and unflinching contractual violations. BCPS's recommendation for non-renewal is a direct result of BCPS's de facto control of NACA II. BCPS's de facto control of the school is contrary to the affirmation BCPS-NACA II Contract Agreement and BCPS's board policy and State of Maryland Charter School Law. Therefore, the recommendation for non-renewal does not belong to the NACA Board of Directors. The recommendation for non-renewal belongs to BCPS. The record and the history of matters must be clear. Student achievement and the status and operation of NACA II represented in the two different charts demonstrates the difference between NACA's Board of Directors, NACA's operating NACA II, and the district's BCPS-operating NACA II. As a result of BCPS's constant interference, students' opportunities to learn and excel have been violated and harmed egregiously and repeatedly. NACA Board of Directors will engage necessary sources, channels, and remedies to obtain justice for all students, parents, staff, and leadership. Respectfully to NACA Board of Directors. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there a, a copy that you was to share with Mr.?
I have copies for everybody.
Mr. Gant, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, next speaker is Ms. Keisha Goodman.
Good evening, and can you hear me? Yes. Good evening and Happy New Years to Dr. Santalisis. This is the Chair and Commissioners. Today, I'm here to discuss the budget as it pertains to the financial burden of technology on schools. Recently, Fairly purchased a laptop cart for thirty-five thousand dollars. Thirty-five thousand dollars is about the cost of a temporary employee, benefits for a BTU employee, and possibly a home in Sandtown. As of now, Fairly does not have two working computers in each classroom, and I would also include Vanguard for that. Due to the need for technology, testing schedules are extended, and the ordinary routine for students to go to the computer lab for resource is disrupted. Fairly state rating went down from three to a two. We know that technology impacts learning. On another note about the budget, please explicitly state the tiered system in your operational budget proposal. For Title One, ESOL and students with disability. It should include all of the LRE information as well. Also, include the budget in the budget proposal, any thresholds, for example, Title One Part A and Part B. This information assists with the transparency of schools' budgets. That's all I have. Any questions? Uka Searis?
I don't have a question, but again, I'm going to ask, um, if you have your comments in writing so that we can really look at them again in terms of response to some of that, if you would make certain, Mr. Gant gets that for me. Thank you. Uh, next speaker is Shante. Is it Dean or Deni?
Deaner.
Deaner, thank you. Sorry, didn't see the R.
Hello.
Hi.
Happy New Year to everyone. I'm going to be real quick. Um, my daughter Kirsten Massenberg, she's autistic, nonverbal. Um, her whole life, we have been jiggling different schools, from the Bear School to Vanguard. We finally got comfortable at Lois T. Murray, which was her last year of eighth grade, which was very bittersweet. But when she came to McMecon, we felt welcomed, um, open arms once we walked in. Um, I have seen progress from Kirsten everywhere, from doing the school store to helping in the cafeteria, helping Mr. Jackson, who happens to be the gym teacher, with the mats. Um, Ms. Daniels, who is the principal, is very authentic, very transparent. Um, McMecon is more than just a school, it's family. And even in my lowest place, they were there to help me even, um, a few months ago, um, due to just financial difficulties. So all I'm saying is that that's a school that is just very unified. I've seen the progress. I've seen Kirsten making, you know, making friends with her peers, and it's just, um, it would be very bittersweet and very unsettling if the school, um, decided to close. And that's all I had to really say. So I hope y'all take time to reconsider, and hopefully we'll have another year with McMecon. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Keena.
I just have one question. Have you been able to connect with any of the team that is, um, working on transitioning for students and getting acclimated, even though I know the board has to make its, you know?
At the moment, no, I have not.
Okay, so we, I, what I will do is ask one of our team members to reach out to you.
Okay.
Um, directly, so, um, Deb, you want to come up? Okay. Uh, so Dr. Brooks will, um, is a, is a great contact so that we can make sure, again, we know that the board has not made their full decision, um, but just want you to be able to get full information, um, in case. But thank you for coming and sharing.
You're welcome.
Tonight, thank you.
Um, our, our last person, uh, signed up is, uh, Ms. Kim Truheart.
Three minutes is not enough. Happy New Year. I am very thankful today. It is 2020. I can see clearly, right, that this year, I'm going to be busy. I'm going to be real busy. Um, I want to thank Will Morant and Quentin, what is Quentin's name? Yes, Quentin came to Liberty yesterday, talked to members of the Be More Clean and Green Team, and are lining them up with job opportunity possibilities right here in Baltimore City Public Schools. Um, I am thankful for that. These young men have worked hard. We completed our five-week program. I had enough money to extend it to six weeks, um, where I gave them lots of grandmotherly love, fed them breakfast. We had fun. We had some not-so-fun moments as well, but, um, they are now ready and willing to work. Thank you, City Schools. Thank you, city schools. Some of you may have seen me in the media last week or so. I went down to the Board of Estimates last Wednesday. I protested a $40,000 contract that they wanted to award to a company in Pikesville. And I don't have anything against my brown brothers and sisters, but then I hire in black brothers and sisters, and I need young black folks to get jobs. And I am on the warpath. So y'all better be looking at every one of your contracts to see how many young African-American residents you're hiring on your contracts or your contractors are hiring. I am declaring war, okay? Last night, 3:00 a.m., I filed another protest for the Board of Estimates, a $1.2 million contract going to a company from Iowa to do janitorial services in city-owned buildings. One, did you hear me? $1.2 million going to a company in Iowa. Yes, Iowa, right? I'm pissed. I am angry. I am looking for jobs, and if y'all know who's got jobs, who can fund the next ten young men that I'm taking off the corners, I consider my program a success, right? Five weeks, six weeks, eighty percent completion rate. These young men now have OSHA safety certifications, CPR, first aid, and AED defibrillator certifications. They are capable. They are ready to work. They've been trained by the best. Hire them. Anybody out there listening? Give me money to take another ten off the corners. Thank you. There's a whole lot of other stuff I want to talk about. I want to talk about homeless kids. I want to talk about a report that I saw recently about homelessness and how you're spending the McKinney-Vento funds. I'm not totally pleased. I think you left one thing off the list, and that's getting them houses, keeping them in housing. You got to help. You really got to help. I had a mother over the holidays with two babies. I put out Kim Trueheart money, right, to put her in a hotel for two nights, right? I put $250 down on a unit for her to move her and her two babies into. Ain't nobody giving me money back, but McKinney-Vento can. Y'all need to look at that, helping these families stay in housing, not get evicted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trueheart, and thank you for what you've done for those young men. Thank you.
I am proud of them.
You should be.
You should be proud of them. And I got a long list of others. I even got guys showing up on my doorstep, right? Ms. Trueheart, I want to join your program, right? The next ten are waiting. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. I just have to say, for people who don't know, Ms. Trueheart has an answer to what to do for what some people think is a problem in Baltimore around what folks want to call the squeaky kids. And so what you do is to help people have the right kinds of skills and then the opportunities to use those skills. So thank you again. We're going to go back again now that we have completed the public comment to see if there are any additional items. If not, we will look at our consent agenda. So... Can I block the three with a student? Okay, so I'm going to put the three items, and these I'm putting together because these are items that our student commissioner will be voting with us on. That's 8.02, Policy ILF Child Abuse and Neglect. And I didn't hear.
It's J.
I'm sorry. I'm not doing a good job of reading. My glasses aren't working tonight. Thank you. JLF, Child Abuse and Neglect, it's the second reader. Didn't hear, I'd need to pull. 8.03, the waiver request for the Baltimore School for the Arts, and 8.04, waiver requests for ACE. Is there a motion for those three items? Commissioner Lynn, is there a second? Commissioner Bondima, all those in favor?
Lynn.
James.
Richardson.
Chinya. Eight, two absent. Okay. The next two I'm going to take a look at will be the 8.01, 8.05, which are, hmm? Oh, and the procurement items. Okay. 8.01 is the Pizzaza contract, 8.05, the Cub contract extension, and the procurement items. Okay, which one?
15.
02 or? Okay. So this is a motion for 8.01, 8.05, 13.01, 15.01, and 15.04. Okay, Commissioner Hassan, is there a second? Commissioner Richardson, all those in favor?
James.
Richardson.
Chinya. Okay, and that is seven, two absent. So now... Yes, what was, is there?
My question is a better understanding of the WMBE and MBE usage for Towson Mechanical.
Okay, is there?
For the MBE.
Is anyone here for procurement? Yes, thank you. Because we're going to do these so that we can, we'll do all those others together since they're all around the renewals, if you don't mind. Thank you.
For Towson Mechanical, you stated WMBE and MBE goals.
Correct.
The goals were 23% with subgoals of 7% African-American, 4% Asian. They were the goals.
Correct.
Okay, in terms of the results, I'm not a genius, but how do the results exactly match the goals?
I don't have the reports in front of me, sir, but that's what they, both Towson Mechanical and both these jobs, when they submit their MBE documents, that's what's on the MBE documents.
Okay, when I look at this as a numbers person?
Mm-hmm.
It looks dubious. Like, how do you get 23, 7, and 4 as your goal, and then you match it exactly with the results? I mean, it just seems like manage more than.
They've agreed to meet those goals of 7, 3, 23, 7, and 4. That's what they agreed to meet.
Okay. So how do you get the exact result of your goal?
Um...
It's not above, it's not below?
We won't know until the end of the project, sir. What this is, is a percent of what the actual dollar amounts will be spent then. What they're saying is whatever they spend, they will meet the 23, 7, and 4.
So it should not say results. It should say working.
Well, yes, that's, they're agreeing to meet the 23, 7, and 4.
Okay, so it should not be results because they're not done yet?
Well, it's the actual results of the actual solicitation is what we're saying.
Okay. It's semantics to me, but...
The project hasn't started yet, so, right, at the end of the, at the end of the project, we'll know whether they met the 23, 7, and 4, whether they've exceeded it or not.
So my point is, you can't say it's a result if you haven't started yet.
Okay, yes.
It's like you're managing the numbers before you even do it.
Okay.
I mean, I may be wet, but...
It's the result of, it's the result of the solicitation is what it is.
The way I understand it, and I could be wrong, but I would look at that as what the expectations are, the results that we seek in this project. So it's more like a target.
Right. We can change the wording. What we're saying is, is the goals were 23, 7, and 4, and the results of the solicitation were 23, 7, and 4. It's not the, we haven't finished a project yet. So at the end of the project, we'll know what those actual percentages are then.
I, I would, oh, go ahead. One, okay. One moment, please.
Okay.
Commissioner, Rita, you okay? Okay, Commissioner Bondima?
Yeah, I have a concern with that as well. We're in the process of submitting a bid for the work that's going to be done. I understand where you say I'm going to 20, but the percentage of your goals. My great concern happens to be with any company that we use is to assure that somewhere halfway in between or a percentage of the distance in between the project, somehow we check to assure that they're meeting those goals. Because after the job is done, there's a strong possibility that they did not meet it, and this has always been, and not just here or anywhere, it's in many projects in the state of Maryland where you have to put in X amount of minority contractors or whatever, we find that that didn't happen. And we need to assure that, and I'm not saying that they won't meet it, but we have to find a system where we can assure that they are meeting those goals. Because that piece is critical, and if they don't meet the goals, what do we do about that? That's what I would be interested in knowing.
As part of the contract, they're supposed to report quarterly to our MBE office, is where they are. And in the contract, we also have liquidated damages that if a contractor does not meet what they've agreed to meet in the beginning, we do have liquidated damage at the end of the contract that we do assess.
So what is the penalty for them not meeting those goals?
I think we have more of an answer for you also, response, and then I'm...
But I'm still, it's another question.
No, I thought we were going, there's more to the first part. No, I'll come back for a second.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy Smith, Director of Design and Construction. So all these projects run under my department. Also, before any final payment can be made to any of the contractors, they have to file a document that says that all of these MBEs have received everything that they've been paid and have met all those goals. So there is no final payment for the project to even close until they prove that everybody met the goals and got paid for all of those.
Thank you. Okay. Are you okay? Okay. Commissioner Hassan?
So I'd just highlight for the Board that the Policy Committee is currently working on the procurement policy. So if you have input or ways that we can better sort of fix the plane while we're flying it, that's a great space to lean in with those ideas and share them with me or other Policy Committee members. Can that?
Yeah, my concern is you can't have results if you haven't started. So maybe it's semantics.
But we can work on making that into the procedure policy.
Just one more thing.
Go ahead.
I think that even from the day that I started on the Board, that has always been, if you remember, I always have questions like that. And for some reason alone, and I've never been quite satisfied, and then we, nobody's come back to say, or make corrections, or say, this is what's been done. So this is the first time that I'm hearing, and maybe not the first time, that I can remember that I'm hearing about how you break down and determine who's complying to, who's... What am I trying to say? Are they showing you the results of the contract or the bid, whatever? Okay?
Okay.
So I'd like to see some kind of system where we can, the Board can look at, not everything, but in some instances, you know, what in results might be. Thank you so much.
And that might be, you know, an interim report that could come to the Operations Committee perhaps in terms of how that's being done.
Thank you.
So with the clarification, in terms of what, for the wording, I understand with the wording, are we ready to vote on these two items for Towson Mechanical? Okay, is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Reed, second. Commissioner Richardson, all those in favor?
Richardson.
So that's seven, two absent. Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Okay, now, I'm going to, just in case, if anyone is looking at an agenda, it's a little different. It's been changed a bit, but what we're going to do now is to complete the items in Section 8, which are around the annual portfolio review. And following that, we will then return to information items, and we'll be looking at 501, Policy JFE, and then I believe it's 9, 901, the Operator Capsule Waiver Request, okay? All right. So at this point, I'm going to invite Ms. Alvarez.
Good evening, Commissioner Chinya and Dr. Santa Lisa's and Board of School Commissioners. Angela Alvarez, I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives. I want to thank all the people that are involved in this process. It involves a lot of work from a lot of people here at District Office to do this analysis. These is very serious matters that we're considering, and that's before the Board tonight. I also want to thank school communities for really being involved and being forthright and really sharing important information that we all need to consider in what happens next. So with that, we'll begin. The key thing that is the main driver for everything we're talking about is our goal of ensuring that every child in this district has access to rigorous, robust academic programs in safe, healthy environments to promote success. That is the main driver, even for some of the hardest decisions that are before you. That's our goal. So I wanted to start with kind of just reminding everyone of that. Before our State General Assembly is a bill called Bill to Learn 2020 that is an important bill, it's House Bill 1 and Senate Bill 1, that would potentially give the district an additional $400 million in capital funds that could be used to renovate school buildings. With the funds we've been able to leverage during the 21st century, we have 15 schools that right now, today, are housed in new facilities. Three of them opened this month, and by the end of the project, with just this pot of money that we have, there will be 32 schools housed in 28 new or fully renovated facilities. And that's huge, and we need to talk about that. Included within that list are six middle, high, and high schools. Four of them are currently open with the Reach Partnership High School being the most recent school opening under 21st Century, and two more will open in the next couple of years with Patterson and Claremont housed together in this school facility. So that's a major accomplishment that we've been able to make with the first part of 21st Century. With this additional part, we considered, how can we, as a system that has such a gap and has such a disparity in the conditions of our facilities, maximize that $400 million that doesn't touch our full need, right? We have too many students that are in buildings that are in poor conditions that don't meet the basic requirements that would prepare them for having an educational adequacy. an edu- uh, educational adequacy. They just don't. And so what's the best way to maximize that? Uh, and so earlier this month and throughout the month, we've been meeting with school communities, we decided to focus on high schools, um, and to begin, um, looking at how we would meet the needs of high schools. Some of the things that we considered in selecting the list of high schools was the success of the school, the ability for improvement, access, uh, quality and distribution of programming. We wanted to make sure that students across school communities could, um, uh, get to these schools and that commu- school communities were equitably served in the lists. We consider school enrollment and school size. We needed to make sure that these were sustainable schools, um, that were healthy, um, both from a building utilization standpoint and from a budget standpoint. High schools are more expensive, um, programming to run. Um, and so it, these needed to be schools that were going to be around. Um, school location and proximity to students. Uh, we, you know, because we're citywide at the high school level, students are traveling distances, um, uh, to get to their high schools. Building utilization, conditions, and the ability of the facility to meet student needs. Um, proximity to elementary and elementary middle programs, um, that are currently covered in the first 21st century Buildings Plan. That plan is not just about new buildings, but there's academic, um, work that goes hand in hand with that. And so when students are leaving those, um, environments where they've had very focused academics, where are they going to high school? And are we making connections between those? Uh, sustainability and school legacy, uh, and the ability to leverage partnerships to make these dollars go further, uh, than they can, or than they would without a partnership. The impetus between focusing on high schools is that we want to impact as many students across communities as possible. We have, um, through our academic department, have talked about the need to really redo, um, our career technic- technical education, um, programming, um, so that students are, um, getting access to those high-quality, high-wage, high-growth industries. And you need a facility that's going to be able to support that. And so in order to help make those recommendations real and fully realized, um, this funding focused on high schools would help us to create the facilities to support that work. Additionally, high schools serve students across neighborhoods, so we're not picking this neighborhood over that neighborhood. And, uh, high school facilities are significantly more expensive to fix than elementary and elementary-middle school facilities. And for example, as a district, we receive roughly $29 million in capital funding from the state each year for the entire district. To fix just systemic needs at a school like City College, for example, and by systemic needs, I mean things like the roof, the windows, the HVAC, elevators, those sorts of, those sorts of systems, um, uh, would cost around, uh, thirty-two, thirty-four million dollars. That's not fixing the auditorium, that's not redoing the science labs, that's not, um, redoing the cafeteria, it's not touching any of those spaces. And so that's why this additional part, we want to focus on high schools if it's approved. It's gonna take everybody in this room, everybody that's listening, talking about this. So again, it's House Bill One, Senate Bill One, the Bill to Learn Act 2020. We need this to get passed. Our high school students need to get it passed. Um, we have a video and we have, uh, information that will be on the website regarding this bill that we need people, um, to support. And to pass that video, that video is statements and testimony from our high school students. Um, some of those are in 21st Bill, 21st Century School Buildings, talking about the difference in when they attended the school and they were in the original building and what it feels like to be in a 21st century building. Our buildings are sending the wrong message to our students. We know we have the best, the brightest, the most important people are our students. And our buildings are not, our buildings are sending the opposite message to them. It also includes statements from and, and visuals from students in, um, our high schools that have not been touched by 21st century. So I urge everyone to, to look at that video and to share that with your friends, your neighbors, and to get the word out about this bill. It's important that it gets passed. So while we have the money to do the feasibility studies, it won't be real if we don't get the bill to pass. So we need everybody talking about it and promoting it and supporting it. Earlier, we shared the list, and this is the list in order. This list, again, too, is also about the legacy of our, our city. So when I talked to you in November about this, you know, we talked about how, you know, the schools on this list are some of our most historic schools that we have in the district. You have the second oldest school in the United States that was specifically built for African-American students on this list. You have the third oldest public high school in the United States. You have a school that we talked about earlier today that's number one in the state for its, um, science education, thirty-six nationally, that's on this list. You have the oldest all-girls public high school in the United States on this list. So again, this is about us as a city, and we need everybody committed to it. So the list, again, um, in order, um, would be, um, looking at the Douglas Building and exploring creating a shared campus with Frederick Douglass High School and Joseph C. Briscoe Academy. That would be the thirty-third and thirty-fourth school that we would be able to touch through the 21st Century Project if this bill passes. Um, then you have Baltimore City College High School. Thirty-six and thirty-seven are Baltimore Polytechnic High School and the Western High School. Thirty-eighth and thirty-ninth is within the Francis and Wood Building, exploring creating a shared campus between Vivian T. Thomas Medical Arts Academy and, um, Blueford Drew Jameson Stem Academy West. And then finally, Emerson Westside High School. Uh, if this passes, this puts us in a place where every student, virtually every student in the high, in the, um, city, um, by the time these buildings are built, would have the opportunity to attend, um, a quality building and have a quality education. And so, so we must do that. I'm gonna now get into, um, the recommendations that are before the board. So, um, tonight is the night of the vote. Um, this board, we, they presented these recommendations on November twelfth. Uh, we held two hearings in this, um, boardroom on December third and December seventeenth. We've had a series of meetings, um, uh, at the schools, uh, listed on this slide. School-based meetings with staff and with community members. Um, and the board has visited, uh, many of the schools that are on this slide. In terms of summary of recommendations, we have, um, one closure recommendation of a traditional high school, um, one closure of a separate public day school, one change, one potential change in grade configuration, two building surpluses, and four amendments to the 21st Century Plan. We have, in renewal, we have, um, nine schools that are up for consideration. One recommended for non-renewal enclosure, three recommended for three-year renewals, three recommended for five-year renewals, and one recommended for an eight-year renewal, um, and one that is still pending further, uh, information. And considering, um, uh, the recommendations, we include, we consider a range of factors from academic performance, climate, um, to school enrollment decides, building utilization, uh, and, uh, recommending, uh, recommendations that are considered as part of the 21st Century Buildings Plan, as well as a renewal framework for operator-run schools. So, um, first, we're gonna start with Sarah and Roach Elementary School. For members of the public, this is a legal process for the board. Um, there are certain things I have to read into the record, so it may sound a little bit mechanical when I get to that part. Um, and that is to ensure that we kind of list all the legal things that the board has considered in the portfolio report that was shared with the school community and is on the district website. But it's important that we, um, say things in order. Um, the board, uh, is, uh, will then, um, vote on the recommendations. Um, so first is a recommendation to close Sarah and Roach Elementary School at the end of, um, this current school year, uh, and to rezone, um, students to the Mary E. Rodman Elementary School and to expand that zone. Um, additionally, to surplus the Sarah and Roach Building back to the city of Baltimore in summer 2020 as it will no longer be needed for educational use. Um, this is pursuant to the 21st Century Buildings Plan. Um, so the Mary E. Rodman facility, um, has been renovated, uh, for both school communities. A big driver behind this recommendation is that the enrollment at Sarah and Roach, um, has declined over time, and enrollment between the two schools has been, been low over this period of time. So there's only enough enrollment, um, for one school at Sarah and Roach in particular. They have declined for, um, from two hundred and forty-one students in 2015, sixteen, which is unsustainable, that number for an elementary school, to, um, about a hundred and eighty-five students in 2018, twenty. If the recommendation is approved, Mary E. Rodman will serve students in a large zone encompassing both the current Sarah and Roach and Mary E. Rodman zones. For members of the school communities that are listening, the work around bringing the two school communities together will continue. So our Office of 21st Century Schools and our academic office is going to continue to meet with, um, the school communities to bring. That's something that's gonna take time to, to form a brand-new identity as one shared, um, campus. The Code of Maryland Regulations, or COMR, requires that local boards of education ensure at a minimum the consideration is given to the impact of our proposed closure on the following eight factors. Student enrollment trends, age or condition of school buildings, transportation, educational programs, racial composition of the student body, financial considerations, student relocation, impact on community in the geographic attendance area for the school proposed to be closed, and school or schools to which students will be relocating. For each of tonight's closure and relocating, relocation recommendations, including building surpluses of traditional public schools, the board has received data regarding each of the eight COMR factors. The schools are Sarah and Roach Elementary School in 2020, George W. F. McMecon High School, when Claremont opens, anticipation, anticipated in 2021, and NACO Two Freedom and Democracy Academy in 2020. The board is also considering one building to be surplus, Grove Park Elementary School in 2020. Based on the consideration of the staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at the board's special session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMR factors listed earlier this evening, is the recommendation of the CEO that the Sarah and Roach program close effective summer 2020, that the board approved the expansion of the Mary E. Rodman Elementary Zone to include the former Sarah and Roach Zone, and that the city school surplus the building effective summer 2020.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Okay, are there?
I move.
Are there any questions from board members? If not, Commissioner?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the portfolio review, review report issued on November twelfth, the testimony given at the special session and public hearing, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMR factors that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Is there a second? Commissioner Bondima? Those in favor of the recommendation? Bondima?
Richardson?
Chinia? Seven, yes, two absent. I'll move to the next.
Um, so the next, um, recommendation before the board is, um, to close the McMecon program. When the construction related to and for the Claremont School completes, no sooner than summer 2021. Um, so there was a parent that had testified earlier, so I want to be clear, this, this would not take place this year. Potentially take place at the end of next year. And again, um, it's time for when Claremont is ready to receive students. We want to ensure that, um, this population of students is not having too many transitions. If approved, um, we're also asking that the board not place any new students at McMecon during this transition period of time. Uh, and we would, um, maintain the, uh, facility for, uh, potential usage. McMecon is a small program serving stu- serving just under fifty students, um, in a small grade span. Um, as a district, we have fewer students needing separate public day schools, um, and that trend has continually, been continuing over time. We have a higher proportion of separate public day schools than we see in similar, um, similar science districts. Uh, the building is an open space building with few, um, enclosed classroom, with few enclosed classrooms and has very few windows. Um, the facility itself is also too large for the school's enrollment with an eighteen percent utilization rate. Uh, and the low utilization makes the building ineligible for capital improvement project, um, funding that's necessary to address numerous facility concerns. If approved, um, staff would work with the school community, um, over the year and a half or as long as it takes for the Claremont facility to open, um, on their transition. Um, that would include individual fam- meetings with families, um, uh, with support from my office, the Office of Special Education, and the school's office, uh, around placement and on, and around preparing, um, the potential receiving schools of Claremont and Bear for the, for this school population. Um, and so, you know, a lot of the things that people testify we take to, we take very seriously. Again, our goal is to, to help students. Um, so we do careful work with that school community during this transitional, um, time, um, if the board approves it. Based on the consideration of staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at the board's special session and public hearings, the content of the official record, and the eight COMR factors listed earlier this nee- this evening, it is a recommendation of the CEO that the George W. F. McMecon High School program close when construction for and related to the Claremont schools completed. The anticipated date to be no sooner than summer 2021, and that the board approve retaining of the McMecon Building for future educational usage.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
I'm gonna ask one thing. Um, you, you, um, addressed the issue in terms of the students and the new students being assigned and, and, uh, reviewed. But, um, if Dr. Brooks, uh, just, there was also some mention around the staff, and I just want folks to really hear that again, if possible, in terms of, um, those folks who are currently assigned and what will happen with, with that staff, because it is a specialized staff.
Good evening, Deborah Brooks, Executive Director of Special Education. Yes, the staff at McMecon are, um, supported and, as well as all of those position, are locked positions from the Office of Special Education. So all of those staff members will have positions, they will have special education positions. Also, depending upon where the students are transitioned to, so if the students are transitioning through, uh, to Bear or to Claremont, the staff supports would also be transitioned to those locations if they choose to. Also, because we do have positions for special education in our citywide programs as well, as well as other special education positions, those staff will be able to support those positions as well. But the Office of Special Education will be working very closely with the staff during this transition as well as working with the individual families.
Thank you. Commissioner Song?
We also heard from a lot of families about some really, really great things that were happening at McMecon as far as school climate and engagement. Um, I hope that we lean into that and allow them to be experts in, in helping facilitate some of the transitions should the board decide that's what's necessary.
Most definitely. We also will be working with all of our separate public day schools to make sure that the programming that is happening at McMecon is happening across all of our separate public day schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other comments or questions? Is there a motion?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the portfolio review report issued on November 12th, the testimony given at the special session and public hearing, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMR factors that the Board accept the CEO's recommendations as stated.
Is there a second? Commissioner Bondima? Okay. All those in favor of the recommendation, please.
James.
Richardson.
Chinya.
Five.
So we have seven in favor, two absent. Thank you.
We're going to next move on to talk about surplus buildings. So the recommendation before you is to surplus the Grove Park Building. It had been swing space for Calvin Rodwell and Rodwell, who is now in their 21st Century Building, so that was one of the openings this January. We would surplus the building back to the city of Baltimore effective 2020. It's no longer needed for educational use. So, based on the consideration of staff recommendations presented in the portfolio report, testimony at public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMR factors listed previously this evening, it is a recommendation of the CEO that the 21st Century School Buildings Plan be amended to add Grove Park and that the building be surplus to the city of Baltimore in 2020.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the portfolio review report issued on November 12th, the testimony given at the special session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMR factors that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner McFadden. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
James.
Chinya.
So we have seven in favor, two absent. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to look at amendments to the 21st Century School Buildings Plan. So we want to amend the surplus dates for two buildings that exist on that plan for the Southeast Building and Dr. Carter G. Woodson. Additionally, we want to remove a building that is currently on the Exhibit 6 list, the Claremont Building. So just moments ago, you voted to add Grove Park, so we're swapping Claremont for Grove Park. The reason we're looking at potentially using that in the future as a satellite kitchen to meet some district need. On an annual basis, the Board can make amendments to the 21st Century School Buildings Plan. The Board will now consider recommendations related to changes to the Exhibit 6 of the 21st Century School Buildings Plan. It is a recommendation of the CEO that Exhibit 6 of the 21st Century School Buildings Plan be amended to change the surplus date of the Southeast Building from 2020 to 2024, change the surplus date of the Carter G. Woodson Building from 2020 to 2022, and remove the Claremont School Building from Exhibit 6.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Any questions from Board? Yes, Commissioner Hassan?
Just a quick question. If we transition Claremont to a kitchen service, does it then no longer go into the square footage utilization because it's not academic space?
It doesn't count against us in the way that we look at utilization. I'm looking at Dr. Washington to make sure I'm saying that right.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
There are no other questions? Is there a motion?
I move that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Is there a second? Commissioner Bondima? All those in favor, please.
James.
Richardson.
Chinya.
Five.
So we have seven in favor and two absent.
The next is something new. We're going to look at parcels of land. So city schools have land parcels within its control. Historically, the transfer of land parcels back to the city of Baltimore was handled through an administrative process. Moving forward, the Board will vote to initiate such transfers as part of a public meeting. So the Board will now consider initiating transfers of land parcels. There are 13 parcels that are kind of described using their official addresses on these two slides. It is a recommendation of the CEO that the 13 lots described in the presentation begin the transfer process back to the city of Baltimore effective 2020, spring 2020.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Any questions? If not?
Can I say one more thing that I didn't say? So this list of parcels was, is included in the portfolio report book for members of the public to look at those parcels if they had any concern. Additionally, it was included in our legal notice that we published in the sun, so just wanted to make sure that was clear because I didn't go parcel by parcel before the vote, but this has been out there for people to consider.
Thank you.
I move that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a second, Commissioner Bondima. I got off track. I'm trying to read all these prepared notes and the COMR wording. All those in favor?
James.
Richardson.
Chinya.
Five.
Six in favor and three are absent. Okay, and we'll move to the next.
So next is a change in grade configuration that I'm asking us to postpone until the February 25th meeting. So before the Board is a consideration around changing the configuration of Curtis Bay Elementary Middle School. We receive feedback during the public process around some concerns that community members have. We have solutions for those concerned, and so we want to have some time to go back to the community before you vote on this recommendation. So it's a recommendation that's related, it's part of the 21st Century Plan, so Baybrook is the building that's been constructed as part of that plan. And so the recommendation is to change Curtis Bay from an elementary middle school into an elementary school for the next school year, for school year 2021. So we will have the Board vote on this on the February 25th meeting to give us time to do some more engagement with that school community. And we shared earlier in November, this is just a reminder, this is a CEO action, it does not require the Board, because this is about a temporary location for a school. So this is related to Vanguard Middle, they've been temporarily located in Northeast Building. They were originally scheduled to move back into that building next year. We're delaying that until the summer of school year 21 in order to try to secure additional funding to prepare the building for the students. So that's the rationale behind that delay. We're now going to transition into the operator renewal recommendations, and I have two colleagues joining us for that part, and I want to give them a chance to introduce themselves on the record.
Good evening, I'm Trevor Roberts, I'm a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives.
Good evening, Teresa Jones, Chief Achievement and Accountability Officer.
So as part of our annual portfolio process, we do a review of operator-led schools. The review of schools comes up every three, five, or eight years according to the school's contract term. We use a renewal rubric that looks at key areas in student achievement, school climate, financial management, and governance. Just a brief timeline of the process. Schools submit their renewal applications in early September. In September and October, the applications go through review by the Charter and Operator-led Schools Advisory Board. Recommendations were presented to the Board on November 12th, 2019. There was an operator renewal work session that school operators had an opportunity to speak directly to the Board on December 5th, and tonight we'll be voting on the recommendations.
So the first school that's before you is NACUTU Freedom and Democracy. It's located in northeast Baltimore. It's operated by the Northwood Poll Community Academy Incorporated. The recommendation is to non-renew the school and to close the program at the end of the school year. It's a transformation school, serving middle and high school students. In the key areas considered in the renewal process, they received a not effective in academic performance, a developing in climate, and a not effective overall in financial management and governance. Additionally, because this is not a charter school, the Board received a report regarding the eight factors that we talked about earlier tonight, so those factors were in addition considered for this school. In particular, the school is not effective in its park growth measure. Park growth is the park measure that has the most weight in the renewal process, and assesses a change in student achievement over time. In English Language Arts for middle grades, they were in the 10th percentile overall. In math for middle grades, they were in the 25th percentile overall. I want to note, in their renewal application for this school, they indicated that they were not applying to continue their high school programming, and had wanted to consider them as a middle school, where fees out of their middle grades programming. The review showed that their lowest marks were in their performance regarding middle grade students, so I just want that noted on the record. They were also not effective in absolute park performance for English Language Arts middle grades, being in the 4th percentile of the poverty index. Also not effective in math for middle grades in the 19th percentile of the poverty index. In algebra, in the 14th percentile of the poverty index. They were effective in English Language Arts for their high school students in the 71st percentile for that group. It's important to note that of the 10 park measures, they were not effective in eight of those 10 measures. So this means that the school was in the bottom half of comparison schools on these measures, and for several of them, they ranked at or near the bottom of schools in the district. They were also not effective in their four-year cohort graduation rate with a grad rate of 66.7% for seniors who graduated in 2018. They were not effective in suspensions and chronic absence. This measure looks both at the school's data and their practices in response to that data. They were also not effective for programming for students with disabilities. They were not effective in operator capacity. This measure is indicating whether or not an operator has generally operated effectively. They were found to be not effective, as evidenced by the operator not meeting key state and federal reporting requirements or critical district or federal obligations. There's been a myriad of issues relating to Title I management, human capital concerns, and additions to needing supplemental funding or loans to meet staffing requirements. An example of these concerns is in school year 2017, the school was found to be out of compliance in providing Title I targeted assistance funds, meaning students experiencing poverty with the majority of the year without getting additional supports that they were Based on the consideration of recommendations presented in the portfolio and renewal reports, operator renewal findings, testimony at the Board's special session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMR factors listed earlier this evening, is the recommendation of the CEO that the contract with Northwood Poll Community Academy Incorporated to operate NACUTU Freedom and Democracy Academy not be renewed, and that the program close effective summer 2020.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Are there any questions from Board member? Not, is there a motion?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the portfolio review and renewal reports issued on November 12th, the testimony given at the special session and public hearing, the contents of the official record, and the eight COMR factors that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Is there a second? Commissioner Bondima? All those in favor of the recommendation, please signify.
James.
Richardson.
Chinya.
Five.
That's seven, and two absent. Recommendation is approved.
All right. So next is Baltimore Collegiate School for Boys. This is also currently located in northeast Baltimore. It's in a temporary building. The recommendation is for a three-year renewal with some conditions. It's a charter school that's serving students in grades four through eight. This school receives developing in each of the categories, academic performance, climate, and financial management and governance. This school was rated highly effective, and its park growth performance in math for their middle grades, they were in the 82nd percentile overall. They were developing in English Language Arts for middle grades in the 61st percentile. They were developing in math for their elementary students in the 64th percentile, and not effective in English Language Arts for elementary students in the 32nd percentile. This school has had some notable, they shared information with the Board that we were able to verify that shows some notable impact that they're having on the performance of male students within Baltimore. But they have areas that they need to work on, so that's where the conditions come into play. They were also very effective, another kind of area of note, they were very effective in student attendance and chronic absence, which evaluates a school's practices surrounding a student attendance, as well as data where the school is able to reduce its chronic absence to 2.1%, which is very notable for a school serving mostly middle-grade students in school year 2018-19. One major area of growth for them are around their operational practices, and so that's somewhat in their attendance policy, things that they need to work on. They were developing in operator capacity, so they've made progress in complying with district requirements, but have had some difficulty regarding student scheduling in grades and handling certain climate issues consistently. Additionally, they've been in a temporary facility for some time, and so they must procure a permanent facility. And so the conditions are, you know, are around ensuring that they're going through, their operator team is getting development around school rules and requirements to keep them in line with those policies, as well as that school staff is getting training around how to support the social-emotional needs of their students and handle issues with bullying and such. Subject to the procurement of a permanent facility prior to the conclusion of this contract term, meaning this year, and based on the operator renewal findings, it is the recommendation of the CEO that the contract with Five Smooth Stones Foundation Incorporated to operate Baltimore Collegiate School for Boys be renewed for three years with conditions for a term that commences on July 1, 2020, and ends June 30, 2023. The conditions shall be set and reviewed by the CEO or the CEO's designee, and will include required professional development for operator leadership, mandatory trainings for staff and procedures for students with disabilities, bullying, suspension, and whole child, and that the school follows certain district requirements and timelines for recording... recording students' grades and scheduling, including those related to interim reporting and quarterly grade entry.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Any questions? Not, is there a motion?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run school's work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in policy IHBJ and administrative regulation IHBJ-RA, that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Is there a second, Commissioner Bondima? All those in favor, please.
Richardson.
Chinya. At seven, and two absent. The recommendation is approved.
The next recommendation is for the Lily Mae Carroll Jackson School. This school is operated by Girls Charter School Incorporated. It's being recommended for a three-year renewal as a charter school serving students in grades five through eight. For academic performance, the school was rated developing; for climate, effective, and developing in the areas of financial management and governance. Highlights from their review include the following. For park growth, which looks at changes in student achievement over time, they received a developing rating whereby in LAA for grade bands six to eight, they were rated in the 54th percentile overall. In math, six to eight, they were not effective, with a score of 39th percentile. As it relates to absolute performance, they were rated not effective in ELA six to eight, where they rated as the 18th percentile in the poverty index group. In math, grades six to eight, they were 18th percentile for that group as well. Looking at their rating for fidelity to charter and application overall, they were given an effective rating. Again, this area covers the extent to which the school has fully implemented its mission. Stakeholders understand that mission, and that the school understands and addresses challenges in its data, particularly in the areas of enrollment, student attendance, dropout rates, attrition, and student choice data or school demand. Last but not least, we're noting their performance in the areas of student attendance, where they were rated effective. Looking at chronic absence, which evaluates the school's practices surrounding student attendance, as well as looking at their chronic absence data, where the school was able to demonstrate that they reduced chronic absence to a rate of 3.1% in school year 1819.
It is the recommendation of the CEO that the contract with Girls Charter School Incorporated to operate Lily Mae Carroll Jackson School be renewed for three years for a term that commences on July 1, 2020, and ends on June 30 of 2023.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run school's work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in policy IHBJ and administrative regulation IHBJ-RA, that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Is there a second, Commissioner Hassan? All those in favor, please. Indicate.
Richardson.
Chinya. Seven, six. Six, three absent. And the recommendation is approved.
Okay, the next school we're going to look at, next school we're going to look at is the Reach Partnership School. It's a transformation school serving grades nine through 12, operated by Civic Works Incorporated. The recommendation is for a three-year renewal. The school was rated developing in academics and climate, and meets expectations and effective in financial management and governance. Some highlights are that the school is rated highly effective in park achievement trend, which assesses a school's change in achievement over time, in ELA 10 in the 88th percentile, and developing in Algebra I in the 50th percentile. They were highly effective in absolute park performance in ELA 10 and the 82nd percentile in their poverty index group, and effective in Algebra I in the 73rd percentile. However, they were not effective in college and career readiness, which considers participation and success in career and college indicators such as SAT, advanced placement, and career and technical education, as well as college enrollment. They were rated effective in the vision and engagement metric of the School Effectiveness Review, which considers the learning environment, culture, and community established by the school, and they were rated developing in students with disabilities, which evaluates the school's practices and procedures for providing services to students with disabilities, and whether those students are exhibiting a trajectory for growth and achievement.
It is the recommendation of the CEO that the contract with Civic Works Incorporated to operate the Reach Partnership School be renewed for three years for a term that commences on July 1, 2020, and ends on June 30 of 2023.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run school's work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in policy IHBJ and administrative regulation IHBJ-RA, that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Is there a second, Commissioner Hassan? All those in favor, please.
Richardson.
Chinya. Six affirmative, three absent, so the recommendation is approved.
Could I ask staff just to pause for just a second? You can resume, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have City Neighbors High School, which is operated by City Neighbors High School Incorporated. This school is being recommended for a five-year renewal. It is a charter school serving high school grades, grades nine through 12. For academic performance, it was rated effective; for climate, highly effective; and for financial management and governance, it was rated meets expectations and effective respectively. As it relates to our park achievement trend, which looks at how a school's change in achievement over time, the school was rated highly effective in ELA 10, where they received a 94th percentile calculation, and Algebra I, where they were in the 91st percentile. Looking at their four-year cohort graduation rate, they were rated effective with an 89% rate of seniors in the 2018 graduating class, completing within four years, excuse me, entry to high school. And looking at the measure of effective programming for all student racial and ethnic groups, which was a new area, as we've made some changes in the last year, the school was rated developing. Noting here that the school has implemented some instructional approaches, processes, and practices, and there are some examples, such as their monitoring of disaggregated student data, their offering of some culturally relevant projects to students, and of their also being mindful of their student body and its recruitment of teachers and staff. However, those strategies have not yet been proven effective, as shown in low absolute performance and proficiency across student groups. Again, looking at cohort retention, which measures the percentage of students who actually stay at the school at least two years after initial entry, the school was rated highly effective.
It is the recommendation of the CEO that the contract with City Neighbors High School Incorporated to operate City Neighbors High School be renewed for five years for a term that commences on July 1, 2020, and ends on July 30 of 2025.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run school's work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in policy IHBJ and administrative regulation IHBJ-RA, that the Board accept the CEO's recommendations as, recommendation as stated.
Is there a second, Commissioner James Hassan? All those in favor, please indicate.
Richardson.
Chinya. Okay, read, okay. Any opposed, any recusals? So we have five, yes, one recused, and three absent. The recommendation is approved.
Okay, our next school is Govins Elementary School. It's a charter school serving grades K through five, operated by the Baltimore Curriculum Project. The recommendation is for a five-year renewal. The school is rated effective in academic performance and climate, and meets expectations and effective in financial management and governance. The school was highly effective in park absolute performance for English Language Arts in the 97th percentile in their poverty index group, and effective in math in the 76th percentile. They're effective in park growth in ELA in the 77th percentile overall, and not effective in math in the 40th percentile. They were highly effective in cohort retention, which again, measures the percentage of students who stay at the school at least two years after initial entry. They're highly effective in parent and staff satisfaction, and effective in student satisfaction, and they were rated effective in programming for students with disabilities.
It is the recommendation of the CEO that the contract with the Baltimore Curriculum Project Incorporated to operate Govins Elementary School be renewed for five years for a term that commences on July 1, 2020, and ends on June 30 of 2025.
I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run school's work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in policy IHBJ and administrative regulation IHBJ-RA, that the Board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Is there a second, Commissioner Bondima? All those in favor, please.
Richardson.
Chinya. Six, seven. Two absent. The recommendation is approved. Thank you. I apologize for some of the juggling. I'm going to make some comments at the end. I know some of you are wondering, why aren't we more excited about some things? But there's a lot happening with folks who can't vote on certain things, and so that's what's happening up here, so please bear with us. Okay, so we're moving to the, to the next school?
Yes, the next school for this evening is Tunbridge Public Charter School, which is operated by Affia Baltimore Incorporated. This charter school is being recommended for a five-year renewal. It's a K to eight school. In its ratings, it received an effective rating for academic performance, highly effective for climate, meets expectations for financial management, and effective for governance. We also failed to mention earlier that meets expectations for financial management is the highest rating available for that particular area. As it relates to the notes on this school, for park growth, again, which assesses changes in student achievement over time, they were rated highly effective in math, grades six to eight, with the 99th percentile overall in their district. Looking at ELA six to eight, they were the 91st percentile. They were rated effective in math for grade band three to five, where they were the 73rd percentile, and developing in ELA three to five with the 53rd percentile. Looking at effective programming for all student racial and ethnic groups, the school was given an effective rating. There is evidence that shows that the school is beginning to implement approaches to address large differences between performance of white and black students, including changes to curriculum, their instructional approach and assessments, as well as teacher development practices to provide on-grade level content for all student groups. The school has kept the lower-performing student group's performance between the 65th and 80th percentile in the district for the tested grade bands. However, there are still large differences in student achievement noted between the racial/ethnic grade band, excuse me, racial/ethnic groups. And in order to be considered effective in this new measure in the future, the school must focus on further development of strategies and practices to raise the achievement of black students. As it relates to satisfaction, they were rated highly effective in student, parent, and staff satisfaction, and they were also rated highly effective in both student attendance areas of, the student attendance area of chronic absence and suspensions. These areas also consider the school's data, practices, and interventions.
It is the recommendation of the Charter and Operator-led Schools Advisory Board that the contract with Affia Baltimore Incorporated to operate Tunbridge Public Charter School be renewed for five years for a term that commences on July 1, 2020, and ends on June 30 of 2025. For members of the public that are listening per our process, it is the Charter and Operator-led Schools Advisory Board that reviews recommendations that are considered for our schools, and they make a recommendation to the CEO. For this one, our CEO has to recuse herself because she has a student at this school.
Two students.
Two students, sorry, thank you. Two students at this school. And so the recommendation is going directly to the Board from the Charter Board.
So as CEO, I officially recuse myself from the review and recommendation of this school. So then I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion? Nope, she can't do that either.
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the Charter and Operator Advisory Board, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run school's work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in policy IHBJ and administrative regulation IHBJ-RA, that the Board accept the recommendation as stated.
Is there a second? Got two of them. Commissioner Bondima, all those in favor? Chinya. Any opposed, any recusals? One. Six affirmative, one recusal, two absent. The recommendation is approved. Maybe I can make it to city now? Okay. I'm trying. Remember I was a pre-K person, okay? We'll go to, I think this is our next school.
This is our, yep, this is our next school. So this is for Wolf Street Academy, is located in southeast Baltimore. It's an elementary program. It's recommended, this is a very historic moment, for a first-ever eight-year renewal. It's a big deal. They were highly effective in academic performance and climate, and meets expectation effective in financial management and governance. Notably, they were highly effective in park growth, which assesses student achievement over time. In math, they were in the 100th percentile, which is the top. And for English Language Arts, they were in the 96th percentile. They were effective in effective programming for students across racial/ethnic groups. Again, this is considering positive practices at schools, including they have direct instruction tailored to each student's needs, they use bilingual materials, and how they focus on recruiting bilingual teachers, and knowing, a knowledge of the student body. However, and this is something we noted for all of our schools, that this is a new area, and it's a work that we're all doing as a dischur in our commitment to equity, that needs to continue, in order to be continued, to be considered effective in the future, they must address differences in achievement between smaller student populations. This is a school where the majority of the students that they serve are Latino students. They're highly effective in cohort retention, which is the measure that measures the percentage of students who stay at the school at least two years after their initial entry over time. They're effective in student satisfaction, and highly effective in parent satisfaction. Additionally, in order to be considered for an eight-year renewal, this school has had to have had a record of at least two prior five-year renewal terms, and of delivering high-quality programming for all student subgroups, and which they have met that standard. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the CEO that the contract with the Baltimore Curriculum Project Incorporated to operate Wolf Street Academy be renewed for eight years for a term that commences on July 1, 2020, and ends on term that commences on July 1, 2020 and ends on June 30, 2028.
This is a very well-earned, I concur with the recommendation as stated.
Are there any questions? Yes, that's right. Is there a motion?
I move that based upon the consideration of the recommendations and rationale of the CEO, the operator renewal report, the testimony given at the operator-run schools' work session and public hearings, the contents of the official record, and the factors listed in policy IHBJ and administrative regulation IHBJ-RA, including for meeting an extended term, that the board accept the CEO's recommendation as stated.
Is there a second? Commissioner Bondima, all those in favor, please.
Richardson.
Chinya. Seven affirmative, two absent. The, this recommendation is approved. Thank you. I want to. I'd like to just make a couple of comments if, if, if I may. First of all, I want to thank everyone who has taken on the challenge to become an operator, to work with the children, our children in Baltimore, because that, that is a risk. We know that, you know it going in, and so we want to thank anyone who has, has had an idea, has thought, taken the time to develop a, a plan and attempted to do some good things that will help the students of Baltimore, so thank you for that. I know this evening is a bittersweet evening for some of you. It's a mighty, mighty high. For others, it is not, but we want to thank you on behalf of the students. I also want to congratulate those of you who are continuing with your, with your charters, whether they are for three years or five years or eight years. Thanks again, and we'll be, we'll be looking to see especially now some of the, the, the best practices and the learnings that you've had, and hopefully you'll be sharing them much more so that we can, you know, use some of those good things and replicate them, modify them as, as needed, but really take the benefit of some of the things that you've taken chances in doing that have worked well. I also want to thank the staff, because this has been a tremendous amount of work. From just gathering all the data to listening to everyone, to then taking the written and the verbal testimonies and then putting it all back together, you really made the, the job of the commissioners an easy one, since we simply have to read everything that you had to put together, but thank you for that. And just, just thanks to parents who've also allowed us to have the opportunity to work with their children. So for, for all of that work and for the work that we are anticipating that will continue, just one big thank you. And I guess this is a great time to say Happy New Year as you all move into the next phase of, of the work that you'll be doing, so thanks. Thank you all.
Just one more thing, just, just a member to the public. So there is one more renewal that's pending, so we're just postponing the vote on Bard Early College High School, so that will take place on February 25th. It's the same time we're considering.
The Curtis Bay.
We're waiting on some additional information until the board will vote at that time. And thanks again.
Okay, we have two information and discussion items that we're going to go back to at this point. The first will be policy JFE, homeless students.
Good evening, Commissioners. James Torrance, Staff Specialist for Strategy and Compliance in Academics Offices.
Louise Fink, Director for Home and Hospital and Health Services. And tonight, we're going to be reviewing the background and the policy that we have for homeless students. The Office of Home and Hospital Services is proposing a version, a revision to the board policy JFA homeless students identification enrollment students and dispute resolution. In 2016, a provision of the Every School Succeeds Act removed students and youth who are awaiting foster care placement from the definition of homeless children and youth under the McKinney-Vento Act.
And if I can add to that, under this act, they created new provisions for directly related to foster children. Those were new codified federal laws. The reason and rationale for this is because the broader definition of homeless incorporated those students either anyway, and they wanted to make sure that they had clear delineations and rights that are different from the homeless status.
So the purpose and goals is to eliminate all barriers to children and youth who are homeless and eligible to attend city schools, to maintain stable educational environments and minimize the effects of homelessness on academic achievement and social emotional development, and define homelessness as a child or youth who lacks a fixed, regular, or adequate nighttime flight, place of residency. And I may add that our policy is all welcoming and all encompassing for all students with the definition of homeless. Reasonable efforts are going to be made to identify all school-aged children and youth who are homeless, allowing, of course, for the fact that people do not have to identify themselves as homeless if they do not wish to. But when they are identified as homeless, we will take every step we can to help them and to do the things that we can do with them. We make reasonable efforts to identify all school-aged children and youth who are homeless, and students who are homeless are enrolled as soon as they are identified. We do not require any proof that you're homeless. If you say you're homeless, we accept that. Provided services comparable to other non-homeless students, they're eligible for transportation, they're eligible for union, uniform vouchers and activity fee waivers, they're eligible for food and nutrition services, and they retain their homeless protection for the remainder of the school year in which they became homeless. A dispute resolution process is used to resolve all disputes and provide a clear appeals process for all parents, guardians, or unaccompanied youth.
And as we go back to understanding awaiting homeless, awaiting foster care placement, if you go back to the broader definition of lacking a permanent nighttime residency, we have, as the federal government and their guidance from the U.S. Department of Education, these students don't qualify for those services because they're not in their usual home or placement. We also understand that this definition is very broad. One of the things that we recognize is that we currently have a relationship with the Department of Social Services, that we have, in their intake forms, when they enroll students, they have a check in a box that they check for McKinney-Vento families. We actually try and we make sure our staff do not use the word homeless. We use the word McKinney-Vento family because we want to make sure that we're not stigmatizing our, our families and our students, because we want them to have access to these services. We also recognize that one of the things that we're seeing is that we did not include migrant students in the original definition, and it was included in co-mart and also the federal law. And to give you an example, is if we had a student whose parents migrated here from West Indian Island, and they were here just during, just worked during a seasonal opportunity, and they enrolled in Baltimore City Schools, just to give you an idea of what that would encompass under federal law.
A homeless student means a student, a youth, a child who lacks a fixed, regular, or adequate nighttime place of residence, and that includes children who are sharing the housing of other persons due to the loss of housing, economic hardship, or similar reasons, and are living in alternative types of places, many of which we hope nobody of our, none of our children ever have to live in, but we have children who are in shelters, but they're also in transitional housing, and we've had some children who have been abandoned in hos, in hospitals, where we've stepped in and tried to make sure that the students had what they needed and got to the correct kind of placement. They have a primary nighttime residence, it is a public or private place designated, not designated for ordinarily, or ordinarily used as a regular place, and they're living in cars, parks, public spaces, abandoned buildings, substandard housing, buses or train stations, or civil stations. And then again, as Mr. Torrance said, the students who are the migratory students who come here and are here seasonally are students that get the protection of the homeless and McKinney-Vento Act.
And back to the first prong, that is the definition in which we incorporate the students who are awaiting foster care, because they can be placed in transitional housing, and they can be placed in a placement that is not their permanent nighttime residency. So that's why we understand, and that's why the federal government has interpreted that they're still included in the actual services, and they still qualify for them.
Okay, and then we met with the policy committee, who gave us several suggestions. We looked at our policy committee suggestions, and we drafted an additional purpose statement to articulate the board's commitment to ensuring minimal interference with the regular delivery of instruction while students transition in or out of their homeless origins. We developed a prior policy standard discussing city schools' commitment to providing appropriate supports for addressing mental and physical health issues faced by unaccompanied youth, and we expanded our compliance reporting to detail the cost of McKinney-Vento items for, that went beyond grant funding.
And this is the engagement we've done thus far.
Okay, question? Commissioner Lynn?
For slide four, I know that, yes. It says comparable to other non-homeless students, the second bullet point under the second other bullet point. Is it a way, and I know this is first reader, but can we see if that, there's a possible way that services are more than a person with non-homeless situations? Because I think, does that make sense? I saw you just go ahead. More services such as mental capacities or physical capacity, so that way students that are homeless, because I know they deal with a lot more than students that are not homeless. So if there's a way that we can incorporate something of a policy that talks about what type of services, and if it's possible, are we able to add more services into that, people that are homeless, because they endure a lot of more physical as well as mental things that affect them throughout their lives?
Yeah, thank you for that, and we are also at this point providing instruction in 13 of our shelters, four days a week, so the students who are living in homeless shelters and not getting the benefit of the fixed address are getting tutoring from our staff four days a week during the entire school year.
And as to add to that, one of the things that we need to do is highlight the good things that we do for our homeless students, such as waivers for prom, waivers for trips, things that we incorporate to make sure that our students have full access and inclusion as their, as their counterparts. These are the things that we do great, and I think that we need to articulate that we do those things for these students, because this is a need, and we address our students as they come to us.
Any other questions or comments? This is a first reader. Okay, so I know you have the information if folks want to offer additional comments, and that's listed here. Did you have another comment?
I agree with Commissioner Lynn. I mean, we talk about equity. This is, this is a case where equity may mean give me more than what you normally give people, so, so I agree with you. So it's not just comparable, it's maybe no less than comparable. I mean, I think that's what he's talking about.
Thank you. Thank you all, and I know you heard the additional comments that came up this evening, so we look forward to how they're incorporated into the second reading. Thank you. And our next item is operator caps and other waiver requests? Should have done that before, right? Sorry.
Okay, good evening again. I'm Trevor Roberts, Specialist in the Office of New Initiatives.
I'm Angela Alvarez, Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives.
Tonight, we're going to be looking at operation, operator waiver and cap requests. So twice annually, operator-run schools can apply for waivers of district policies and request to change their enrollment caps. So these requests are put through a variety of considerations. We look at the school's evidence of demand or capacity to implement the change, the school's rationale about how the change meets the school need, evidence of how stakeholders were involved in vetting and approving the request, the quality of programming offered by the school, and for enrollment requests, we look at building capacity. So the process is that the submission is made by the school to the Office of New Initiatives. ONI determines whether or not the request meets the established guidelines. We vet the requests with key departments. The requests are shared with the Charter and Operator-led Schools Advisory Board. Tonight, we're presenting the requests to the board, and the board will vote on the requests on January 28th. So we'll start with enrollment capacity requests. For charter schools, the contractual enrollment caps are used to develop their school's budget projections and help schools manage their budget development and allocation of resources. They're also used by the district in the assessment of space available in various schools and grades as part of the school's portfolio management. The first request comes from Bard High School Early College. Their current enrollment cap is 500. They're seeking a reduction of 50 students to 450. This reduction would allow the school to work with a smaller cohort of students, which they believe would allow them to better prepare students for the school's culture and provide more individualized attention to prepare students for the accelerated academic program. And just to remind the board and the public, Bard High School Early College is both a high school program, and they have a college program within the school where students earn an associate's degree along with their high school diploma over the course of four years. So it's a accelerated program. The, this enrollment plan was developed in partnership with the staff students and the school's local advisory board, and it will allow them to decrease class sizes from approximately 28 students to 22. And no changes to the school staff or scheduling would be required as a part of this change as the school has already started to enroll to that 450 number. They have told us that they do remain committed to serving 500 students in the future. This is a temporary measure that they'd like to do in order to better get their programming on, on the footing that they'd like it to be. Okay, the next.
One second. Commissioner McFadden?
Thank you. So this would be a request for the next five years?
So they're requesting this as part of their renewal contract that you'll be voting on in February. They have said that over the course of that contract, they will reconsider the enrollment cap when they, when they have the school climate running at a, at a place that they want it to be.
So the term will depend on, so five years is the potential max. It could be three years, so it's going to depend on when we come back in February with how many years? So these are tied together?
Thank you. The next request is for Elmer Henderson, Johns Park Hopkins Partnership School. Their current approved cap is 567 students, and they are requesting to increase that to 684 over the course of three years. What they've seen in the past in their enrollment trends is that they've lost students during the transition from elementary to middle school. So what their request is to enroll, expand their upper elementary and their middle school capacity. in order to accommodate students that they have traditionally lost during that middle school transition and to expand their middle, their middle school programming to add honors programming and other, other advanced programming. So, the school used a consultant to engage stakeholders, and they have over 300 surveys showing support for this change. And they have submitted a staffing plan, which would add classroom teachers and resource teachers based on additional enrollment. In addition to this, the school's operator, which is Johns Hopkins University, has developed plans to build seven additional classrooms in the school building to accommodate the additional students. Those plans are contingent on the approval of an increase in enrollment. And just for the Board and the public information, the school has priority enrollment zones that cover portions of several neighborhood schools. So, the, the student population that they're largely drawing from comes from the zones of several neighborhood schools in the area. The next request is from Empowerment Academy. Their current cap is at 242 students, and they are requesting to increase to 397 over the course of the next four years. The school received a five-year renewal in last year's renewal round. And in the meantime, they have been named a recipient of MSD's Charter School Expansion and Replication Grant, which would, they would use to fund renovation of classrooms and community outreach efforts to meet their increased enrollment. They would use the increased enrollment to expand their current academic programming, which, again, was found to be effective as shown by their five-year renewal. And they have over 125 students on the waitlist for this year. So, there is demand in the community for seats at the school. And the school's facility has space, and the proposal was vetted with the school's School Family Council and with staff.
The number for waitlist is so far this year, so schools are still in the period of accepting applications. The lotteries are in February.
So, next we have KIP Harmony Academy. Their current cap is at 1,518 students. They're seeking an increase to 1,626. Again, the school received a five-year renewal in last year's renewal. They have indicated that as part of this increase in renewal, they would not be adding staffing. And they would take the additional students by increasing class sizes. So, class sizes would be about 28 students kindergarten, first grade, 29 in grades two through four, and about 32 in grades five through eight. As part of this, the expansion request, they have vetted this plan with their school community and have submitted over 550 signatures in support of the expansion. And the facility that they're in has ample space to hold additional students. And finally, we have Tunbridge Public Charter School. Their current cap is 450 students. They're looking for an increase of 10 students to 460. Earlier tonight, the Board approved a five-year renewal for this school. And this request would be not particularly to have the school enroll up to that cap of 160, but to allow the school to get funding for any students that they enroll over 450 students. So, their plan is to remain at 450 students, but to have additional flexibility if they happen to go over that cap. Our next waiver request is.
One second. Commissioner Reed?
I just have a question. When I look at KIP, and it says that they wanna, they want to increase the students. They wanna leave staff unchanged. So, therefore, the head cap goes up, the number of kids in class goes up. So, is this an academic decision or a business decision?
No, it's a business decision. So, they're, part of their rationale is that they have a budget shortfall. And so, this would help them meet that and be able to maintain their current level of staffing. It's in their, yeah, it's in their request. So, tonight, we're just sharing what the requests are for the Board to hear, for members of the public. When we come back, we will share the recommendation of the CEO. So, we're not at that, that point of looking at all of these factors. Members of the public can write to the Board. It's a public process. I encourage members of the public, just why we're presenting it publicly, publicly. So, I encourage members of the public to write to the Board or to sign up for public comment if they would like to share their opinions on these matters.
And the vote is not till next time?
That's correct.
And that's when we'll see the recommendations, the staff recommendations?
That's correct, when we come back. And that includes all members of the public, whether they're staff or community members.
Okay, we do have one request for a waiver of district policy. This is coming from Bard High School Early College. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, this is a academic program where students earn both a high school diploma and an associate's degree. As part of their Board-approved admissions program, they have a, an admissions process where they look at, they have students apply. They have the student, have students do a writing sample and an interview to see if those students are motivated and would be a good fit for their academic program. Their current request is to add to this admissions process by being able to look at students' middle school attendance data and use that as part of their consideration of admissions to their school. So, their rationale for this is that they see a correlation in their current students between their attendance and truancy rates and both their academic, their grades, and their ability to obtain the associate's degree. So, they believe that by being able to look at middle school attendance data, that they'd better be able to screen students during their admissions process. They have indicated that they wouldn't use attendance data as a hard cutoff. It would just be one of several indicators that they look at in their admissions process.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, okay, so this was just for our information, and we will then be getting recommendations in terms of actually voting?
Yes.
And I would, I'd also say then, if folks have comments concerning, should they also forward those or?
Yes, if there are questions, please forward those, absolutely.
Office of New Initiatives. Okay, thank you.
I need to go back.
Yes, I know.
Something earlier tonight, so we just had, I just wanna be on the record about something that I was a little bit confused about. So, I wanna go back and correct something to give you guys a chance to do a vote that I, I think is necessary. Thank you, Chief of Staff.
So, they're bringing, they're gonna bring up the presentation. It'll just take a minute, because they had exited out of all close.
So, I started tonight's annual portfolio review, talking about the high school plan. One of the things that we need to, the Board to vote on is to, uh, thank you. One of the things that we need the Board to vote on is to use the funding that is set aside within the 21st century school buildings instead of the schools that are in year three of the 21st century buildings plan. And so, and asking that the Board vote to do that.
There any, any comments or questions about that? This was, I was looking for that, thank you. This was, the Board's approval of the recommendation concerning the, the focus in the 21st century plan towards the high schools.
So, the whole decision's our purview and nobody else's? I mean, MSA or anybody like that, it's just, just our purview? So, we make the decisions, just us or?
In terms of, we're, we are, we are voting to say that we wanna use the dollars to do the feasibility plan. And yes, and that we're making a revision to the, the, our strategy towards going towards high schools. We, we are, we are the people who could do that, yes.
Yep, just like earlier, earlier in the night, you voted to amend the 21st century plan in several ways.
Right.
So, this is a similar, this is similar to what you just did.
So, is there, is there a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Reeves, there's a second. Commissioner Richardson, all those in favor? Chinya? Seven? Six, three absent. Is that, am I, am I doing it right this time? Okay, it is late now, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that we, we have our committee reports are available, but committee chairs, are there any things that you'd like to highlight or remind folks?
Madam Chair, the Teaching and Learning Committee was, of course, canceled the meeting from last week due to inclement weather. So, our next meeting is scheduled for February 4th, 2020. And the agenda items are curriculum improvement, approval for social studies, and attendance strategy update, KRA, early, I said approval, that's what I said, approval. It is not approval, it's approval. That's why I laughed. Never mind. Sorry. I'm gonna ask, though, if, if the committee could receive some of those items for the curriculum approval any earlier than just the week prior to us having that committee meeting? If we could get those, some of the documents to review sooner than later to just kinda help us with the discussion in that meeting.
Thank you. And just a reminder that, you know, that, that meeting, if, when, when we have an issue with weather and there's an announcement that evening, afternoon and evening activities are canceled, that, that we have generally included our meetings with that. So, just, just for public to, to, as a reminder of that. And also a reminder that the materials for our committee meetings, just like our board meetings, are available on Board docs. So, all of the, the reports that were, have, would have been given are already posted. So, if you'd like to take a look at those, you are welcome to do so. Upcoming meetings, Operation Committee meeting will be in this room on Tuesday, January 21st. At 10:30 a.m., Policy Committee, also on Tuesday, January 21st, at 3:30 p.m. in the Boardroom. Our next Board meeting will be on Tuesday, January 28th. As was mentioned, Teaching and Learning Committee will meet on Tuesday, February 4th, 3:30 here in the Boardroom. And the Parent and Community Advisory Board, P-CAB, will be meeting on Thursday, February 20th, at 6:30 here in the Boardroom. Is there any other business that we need to do? If not, is there a motion that we adjourn? Commissioner Bondima, second by Commissioner Reed, all those in favor? That's unanimous, and so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.